Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Kernersville Board of Aldermen. Tonight is Wednesday, August 4th, and we're glad everyone could be here to join us. If you'd like to speak on one of the public hearing matters, there are speaker cards in the back of the room. If you could fill one out and give them to the town manager, Curtis, if you could wave your hand, who's sitting right here. All right, with that, I'll call the meeting to order. We'll begin with an invocation by the Reverend Victoria Lasley from Kernersville Moravian Church.
Please join me in prayer as you feel led. Lord, I lift this meeting up to you tonight, God of vision, wisdom, and compassion. I pray for the leaders in this room, for the members of the community who are here this evening, and for all who are not here tonight. We give thanks for the many people who make up the Kernersville community. I pray you continue to provide this board with perseverance as they navigate the path you have laid before them. I thank you, Lord God, for the gifts you have placed in this room and for their willingness to serve. I thank you for the voices of the community members who are here tonight to speak not only for themselves but on the behalf of others. I offer my gratitude for the many gifts and talents that reside here in this wonderful community. May your spirit be present tonight in all that is said and in all decisions that are made for the benefit of the people here and beyond. Tonight, we also pray for our families, students, faculty, and staff as they prepare to begin a new school year. Be with all of us in this season of new beginnings and transition. For your familiar presence in unfamiliar times, we are thankful. Amen.
Thank you. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. All right, so tonight, tonight we have several public hearings. Then we have an opportunity for speakers from the floor. Anyone may speak from the floor on an item that is not otherwise covered on the agenda. Again, if you'd like to speak from the floor, please fill out a speaker card. If you'd like to speak on one of the public hearings, please do the same. So if you picked up a copy of the agenda, you'll see there's procedural rules for the public hearings. It's similar to the rules at the planning board. When an agenda item is denoted as a public hearing, persons attending shall be permitted to address the Board of Aldermen regarding the item under consideration. Those speaking in favor, speaking first, and those against, speaking second. Proponents and opponents shall each be given 20 minutes of time to speak and may choose to allow one speaker to utilize that time or choose to allocate the time among different speakers. In the event that either proponents or opponents have not designated a speaker or speakers to represent that view, the mayor shall divide the 20 minutes by the number of speakers wishing to address the Board of Aldermen, and each such speaker shall be allowed that given time within which to express his or her comments, ideas, concerns, expressions, and desires. After the opponent speaks, the mayor will allow the proponents five minutes for rebuttal. If the proponents choose to exercise this option, the opponents will also have five minutes for rebuttal. In the event that the proponents do not present rebuttal, then the opponents shall be given no further time to speak. Our first three public hearings are related. Item 1A is a public hearing on an annexation by North Point Development. Item 1B is a public hearing text amendment for a proposed text amendment to the UDO amending Chapter B, zoning docket KT 265. And 1C, public hearing rezoning, Michael Johnston, agent for owners, at the end of Witt Station Road, containing 155.31 acres, more or less, zoning docket K 788. Mr. Hatling?
Thank you, Mayor Morgan. I've been contacted that the applicant on these three cases, the annexation, the text amendment, and the rezoning, is going to request a continuance for till September 7th Board of Alderman meeting. We've been working with the applicant on the project, doing some text amendments. They've recently met with some of the neighbors to talk about enhancing the buffer yard, addressing some stormwater issues, and so we'll be working with the applicant this coming month before the September meeting. And I believe a representative is here tonight.
Would she like to speak to the request for continuance? If you could state your name and your address for our town records.
Sure. I'm Tim McElroy with North Point Development. The address as well?
Yes, please. And is the microphone on?
It is.
Okay.
716 Hidden Glen Drive.
I'm sorry, you'll have to hold it right in front of you.
Is it light on?
Yeah.
Tim McElroy. Better? Thank you.
Yes, much.
Okay, I'm with North Point Development. My address is 716 Hidden Glen Drive, Cincinnati, Ohio, 45230.
Michael Johnston, North Point Development. Address is 4805 Montgomery Road, Cincinnati, Ohio, 45212.
And my name's Mike Fox. I'm an attorney here representing the applicant, and my address is 400 Bellmead Street in Greensboro.
Yeah, no, and we appreciate the board's time this evening. We do have a presentation prepared, which we can go through if the board would like. We spent probably an hour, hour and a half with the local community last night, meeting in the neighborhood directly adjacent, the backyards, looking at the impact that this development would have on their neighborhood. And we just felt at this time it would be best to work on some improvements that we discussed with them tonight. We are certainly guys that like to live up to our word, and we told them last night that we would come down next week and in the time between now and the next meeting with better plans that take into account proximity to homes, landscape buffering, buring, and some continued time to look at things like stormwater analysis and noise. So again, we feel it best at this time to request the continuance to the September 7th meeting, and we're available to answer any questions. But again, we just feel it would be the most respectful thing to the neighbors to do so and take some time to really consider the impacts that this is going to have.
Thank you.
Michael, could I add a couple? I'd like to add a few things to that, please. Jeff, are you able to pull up our presentation so that we can look at the site plan?
While he's pulling that up, I want to, I want to make it known that we were fully prepared to come in tonight and present a full presentation. We're not going to waste everyone's time without this evening. We've developed a plan that is fully compliant with all local laws and regulations. Michael's worked with Jeff quite a bit to get to this point. We were fully compliant. We feel very confident in that. But we're a good neighbor. We're not a merchant developer and builder who comes into a community, throws up a building, and then sells it. That's not what we're made out of. We own the portfolio that we've developed in the past 10 years, and we're really proud of that. So we heard last week in particular that there were some neighbors that were concerned about our project. So three of us from North Point, including one of our founding members, spent, you know, close to an hour and a half with about 10 folks last night. I think we had four families represented, and we heard their concerns loud and clear that while we met the Kernersville buffering requirements, it's not sufficient. We sympathize with them. We get where they're coming from. So we promised them last night that we would go back to the girling board, come up with a plan that's better for them. May not be as good for us, but it will be better for them because that's how we operate. We want to be good neighbors. We want to be good citizens. So, you know, rather than coming to you tonight with a plan that's been rushed and not been vetted by us or the neighbors who are concerned, we thought the continuance would be the best thing to do. It'll allow our staff to come up with a plan, come back, meet with the neighbors, and I believe there's more neighbors that probably want to speak to us. We heard, we talked to some folks outside tonight before we came in here, and I think there's more neighbors that we need to meet with. So we'll be, we'll be glad to provide details, provide a public format where we can meet with anybody who has concerns about our development and address those, and then come back before this board if you're willing to do so.
If you're a neighbor of this property or had come to speak on this case, can you raise your hand so they'll have an idea? Thank you. All right. Do you have any recommended language for a continuance of an annexation?
On all three public hearing items, I would recommend board take a vote on continuing all three public hearings to the September 7th Board of Alderman meeting.
Mr. Powell, do we need to have anything special in the motion as to the annexation to set the date for the annexation petition? Or since we've already set it for tonight, can we continue it?
I'm not sure I understood your question very well.
So because of this request, they're asking the Board of Aldermen to continue item 1A, which is a public hearing on an annexation, 1B, which is a public hearing on a text amendment, and 1C, which is a public hearing on a rezoning. Because one of those is an annexation, I wanted to make sure that the motion is proper. And did we need to actually set a date and time for an annexation hearing of September 7th? Or is it sufficient to continue the annexation to September 7th?
I think you can continue to hold together one time.
Okay, perfect. All right, do I have a motion to continue item 1A, public hearing annexation to the September 7th Board of Alderman meeting? Do I have a motion by Alderman Cruz? Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Alderman Pennix? All those in favor? It's unanimous. All right, next I need a motion on item 1B, a motion to continue the public hearing on the text amendment zoning docket KT 265 to the September 7th Board of Alderman meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Alderman Boyer, second by Alderman Cruz. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Next I need on item 1C, the public hearing rezoning, zoning docket K 788, a motion to continue the public hearing on the rezoning to the September 7th Board of Alderman meeting. Motion by Alderman Kenny Cruz, second.
I'll second it.
By Alderman Boyer. All those in favor? It's unanimous.
Mayor?
Yes.
Go ahead.
The only thing I would like to add is, thank you for acknowledging there's more people out here that would want to talk to you. So do you mind staying out in the lobby to make sure that every person who would like to talk with y'all tonight gets your contact information or when you're going to be back in town?
Of course, absolutely.
Please. Thank you so much.
And if we, can we have one more comment in here for the neighbors? You know, I want the neighbors to understand, we talked with them last night, and we made a commitment that we will work with them. We've made a commitment that we will try to work with them as well on getting their streets improved, and that means money coming out of our, our private money coming out of our pockets, right? So I just want to give word to those folks we met with last night that we sincerely mean that, okay? We're not, we're not trying to pull anything over on any of you. We meant what we said. We will work on delivering that to you, okay?
Thank you.
Okay.
It may be best if we have the discussion outside because I'm afraid if we're in the lobby, we may disturb your meeting.
And it's a beautiful night. Do you agree, Mayor Protown? All right, so I think at that, with that, Raymond Breakfield, Cheryl Hudgens, Jonathan Ballinger, Doris Chapel, and Tracy Gray are no... All right, welcome back after this brief recess to a regular meeting of the Kernersville Board of Aldermen. We have more public hearing items on our agenda this evening. The next two public hearing items are related, items 1D and 1E. The first is a public hearing on a text amendment. Curtis Swisher, agent for the town of Kernersville, for a proposed zoning text amendment to the UDO amending Chapter B. Amendment addresses impervious coverage in the IP, which is institutional and public zoning district, zoning docket KT 266, and consideration of an ordinance adopting said text amendment. An item 1E, which is a public hearing rezoning, Dale Pennington, agent for owners, petitioner requesting a single-phase conditional district rezoning from RS 7 and RMUS to IPC, institutional and public conditional use, for properties located at 413, 411, and 401 South Main Street, containing a total of 2.52 acres, more or less, and being all of the pins as listed on the agenda. The use is requested, government offices, museum, or art gallery, zoning docket K 789, in consideration of an ordinance, rezoning said property. We'll begin with a presentation by our Community Development Department. Mr. Hatling?
Catherine Gardner, the Community Development Manager, will make a presentation on this text amendment and the rezoning.
All right, Ms. Gardner?
Good evening, Mayor and Aldermen. Tonight's cases, KT 266 and K 789, are related, so they are presented together. The text amendment is an increase to the impervious coverage allowed in the IP zoning district. This would give an additional 10% of impervious coverage for those sites. Watershed regulations of impervious coverage will still apply for properties within a regulated watershed, so it would have to balance on both sides, but this would be impervious coverage from the zoning perspective. The current maximum impervious coverage is 60%, and the text amendment is a recommended The Planning Board and Staff recommendations on the text amendment are a motion to approve the text amendment as presented. The rezoning for the Kernersville Visitor Center, case number K 789, is to rezone three parcels from RS 7 and RMUS to IPC, which is the institutional and public conditional use district in the single phase. One parcel is owned by the town of Kernersville. The other two parcels are owned by the Kerners Folly Foundation. Proposed uses are museum or art gallery and government offices. The town's parcel is the largest at 1.24 acres, and the folly's parcels are .76 and .52 acres respectively. There is a faint line here going down the, splitting these two parcels. These are the ones under folly ownership, and this is the town's parcel. There are two site plan modifications that are requested with this conditional district rezoning. One, we've discussed with the KT 266 text amendment. The other is to the central Kernersville overlay district. The applicant is requesting modification from the strict interpretation of the overlay district design standards. The design that's proposed, which will be on the next slide, meets the intent of the overlay district architectural standards and supports the development that will complement and expand the unique character of the downtown and historic districts. So as you can see, the elevations look a lot like the folly, so they have borrowed heavily on the architecture of the folly, which is such a unique building in downtown and Kernersville to design this building. So this deeply pitched roof from the side, the arch in the brick, some of the corbels, and these are all architectural details coming from the folly to the visitor center building. The Kernersville development plan has this area as a medium-density residential, which is intended to accommodate medium-density residential development in a walkable community and as well as medium-intensity institutional and recreational uses. Planning Board's hearing was on July 12th. The rezoning, Planning Board and staff both recommend amending the unified development ordinance to rezone the properties in case K 789 from RS 7 to RMUS and RMUS to IPC, and found it to be consistent with the comprehensive plan and that it furthers creating detailed design standards for buildings and site plans in downtown to protect and promote the strong sense of place. High-quality architectural design will enhance the overall image of downtown, particularly one of our most recognized buildings, and the use as a medium-intensity institutional use will not negatively impact future land use of the surrounding area. They also recommend approval of the site plan and conditions as presented in the Planning Board report. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Are there any questions at this time?
Catherine? With the rezoning that says governmental offices? We're not going to have town offices over there. So should it say governmental office or just office space? Because that's the way it's reading in the text, and we're not going to have those.
That's how it was submitted, so if the board feels that it's appropriate to remove the use, then I think you would have the ability to do so.
I just don't want there to be a misunderstanding and someone think that we're going to have offices over the visitor center.
I mean, it could be at some point in the future, you know, with the townhomeing part of the building, I mean, with it being a visitor center, some point in the future, if there's an employee in there other than an employee of the folly, they could be an employee of the town, but there's...
So your recommendation is to leave it?
I would leave it, just in case in the future, you know, there is an employee in there that's an employee of the town or a shared employee of the town in the folly.
Okay, perfect. Thank you both.
Are there any other questions at this time? All right, since, since the text amendment doesn't relate just to the folly, it would be better procedurally to have two separate public hearings, so we'll do that. Because the text amendment would apply to any future zoning IP and the impervious surface coverage standard, as was explained by Ms. Gardner. So I will declare the public hearing for item KT 266 open. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of the proposed text amendment zoning docket KT 266? I have not received any speaker cards to that. Mr. Swisher, have you or the town clerk received any?
No, ma'am.
Seeing no one here to speak in favor of this text amendment, is there anyone here to speak in opposition to the text amendment? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Do I have a motion from the board? Go ahead, Bruce.
I'd be glad to move approval, please.
Motion by Alderman Bruce Boyer.
I'd like to second that.
Second by Mayor Protown Fulton. All those in favor? It's unanimous. All right, the next public hearing is item 1E. It's the public hearing on the rezoning, zoning docket K 789. I'll declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of the rezoning? I see there's some representatives of the folly here. If you'd like to speak to the rezoning, you may.
Madam Mayor, Board of Aldermen Kevin Bug, 1627 Angus Ridge Drive, Kernersville, North Carolina 27284.
Great, you're up here to go and do the same.
Ray Smith, 824 Branchwood Drive, Kernersville.
Thank you. Obviously, you know, our petitioner was Dale Pennington, and she recently had her little girl, so we're here representing. Ray is on our facility committee for the visitor center, and I'm currently the chairman for the foundation. Just like the board, I think it's pretty self-explanatory. Staff has been great working with Weston Sim, our architect. We are very close to completing our capital campaign. As Bruce and Chris, not here, but are two representatives with two of our members, things are moving really rapidly right now, so we're hoping to finish off the campaign shortly and go out to bed. So we're very close to being where we need to be to make this a reality. It's been a long time. We've been talking about this for a number of years. So I'd just like the board, so chooses, we'd like to go ahead and get this done, and then we can move forward with everything else we have planned, so, great.
Thank you. About covered it all, but yeah, this is something we've been working on for years and years and years. I know Kevin and I talked about this 20 years ago, I think, so, so, you know, certainly appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you both.
Any questions the board have? Are there any? Or an open session? All right, thank you.
Is there anyone else here to speak in favor? Is there anyone here to speak in opposition? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed.
Madam Mayor, I would just like to say real quick, Kevin reminded me I was supposed to let the board know. Alderman Thompson is not here tonight. He asked if he could phone in, then found out that he did not have any reception. He is with his son at a Boy Scout high adventure camp, I think in West Virginia, so he has no reception, but as Alderman Bug, or Kevin Bug mentioned, Alderman Thompson and Alderman Boyer have worked on the committee with the folly, and he also supports the petition
Mayor, I just have one question. Kevin, you missed your opportunity to ask for that last dollar push, right? I know you're close, right? To get in the last dollar. I did see, and Chris is not here, Bruce, are you still affiliated? Because at the planning board meeting, Jim and someone else excused themselves from the vote. I want to make sure we're good.
Mr. Swisher, would you like to address that? You had done some research on that, or you had in connection with Mr. Hatling?
Yeah, I've researched from Mr. Hatling and Mr. Hooker, and from what we, best we can tell, I think it's okay for Alderman Boyer to vote on this, correct?
Alderman Boyer is not currently a member of the folly board, is that correct?
That's correct, yeah. Okay. He's just on the committee. If he had been on the board, or if anybody else here was on the board, then they would most likely need to excuse themselves because of the change in general statute.
My role is, is I'm one of the two aldermen that are representing the town in just the agreement process for the visitor center.
Perfect. I was just surprised when they removed themselves from the vote at the planning board meeting. So, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Are you ready for a motion? We've closed the public hearing, so yes, I'd like to make a motion for approval. Okay. A motion by Mayor Protown Fulton. Have a second by Alderman Cruz. What did you say?
I said I'll second, so Bruce, I have to put a motion ahead.
Okay. And our congratulations to Dale.
All those in favor? It's unanimous.
Madam Mayor, just for clarification, Mayor Protown Fulton, your motion was for the rezoning with the site plan and conditions as presented, correct?
Presented best of. Yes, sir. Okay, anything further on that? So now with the visitor center, you have an opportunity to follow up on that idea presented a long time ago about folly burgers as a fundraiser. I think Kenny remembers that meeting. And Bruce, all right. Well, congratulations. We look forward to good news about the last dollar raised and, and a lot of great progress has been made in that effort. Okay, we are now to the public hearing, item F, which is a rezoning. Debbie Joyce, agent for owners, petitioner requesting a single-phase conditional use rezoning from MUS and IP to MUC for properties located on the eastern side of Teague Lane at the southeast intersection of Teague Lane and Hedgecock Road, containing a total of 61.87 plus or minus acres, and being all of the pins as listed in the agenda. Use is requested, residential building, single-family, zoning docket K 57A3. Uses requested residential building, single family, zoning docket K 57A3. Mr. Hatling or Ms. Garner?
Thank you, Mayor. Our next case tonight is at Caleb's Creek. This is the, this includes the parcel that is subject to the land swap decision further down on your agenda. So Caleb's Creek and BOMA are trying to get their ducks in a row should that be approved by presenting the following rezoning. So the current zoning is IP for the town's parcel and MUS two-phase for the Caleb's Creek parcel. There was an FDP that was approved at the planning board level in January of 2021. The requested zoning for both parcels would be MUC. The site plan as presented in the revised format would be 61.87 acres. The number of lots is 100 for a density of 1.62 units per acre. Watershed is the lower Abbott's Creek and it is a low-density development. So the currently adopted final development plan is only encompassing 80 lots. So the addition of the town parcel allows for a room for the roundabout on Teague Lane, common area for a mail kiosk, and 20 additional residential lots. So this is the currently approved final development plan that does not include any development plan on the town's parcel. The developer has submitted three representative elevation drawings. Elevations are verified for conformance with general design standards for Caleb's Creek during permitting, but these are the three elevations. They do have variations on each one, so they're not all of the same, but these are their three core designs. This rezoning does also include some public greenways and private trails. The same network of public and private trails will be constructed as shown during that final development plan approval. You can see one here in green. I think this is the public one and then the blue be a private one. So there's an extensive trail network for the neighborhood and the public. Planning board had a hearing on this on July 12th as well. Planning board and staff's recommendation is to amend the unified development ordinance by rezoning the properties in this case from IP and MUS to MUC, being both reasonable and in the public interest. The conditional use district allows the building architectural standards to be applied, furthering our goal of being a unique, high-quality community in the triad. And the petitioner has also requested the conditional use district to allow consideration of the specific site plan, which addresses the needs for appropriate buffering and for the future roundabout at Hedgecock Road. We do, in yellow, you'll see a new recommendation that the said motion of approval is based on the approval of adopting the resolution authorizing the exchange of the town-owned property on Teague Lane with BOMA North Carolina LLC for the property also on Teague Lane, so contingent upon approval of the land swap. Planning board and staff also make this recommendation, subject to the site plans and conditions as presented in the planning board report. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Are there any questions at this time?
The staff report indicated that Jeff had a concern about buffering in some of the lots that were close to Teague Lane. Does this plan address that?
Yes, we added a condition that there would have to be a landscape plan that would, that would show exactly what they were planning to do, because some of the residential lots do back right up to that roundabout at Hedgecock and Teague.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, I just have a question. In our legal post in the Kernersville News, our site map's not right. Are we okay to still vote on this legally? I guess, Mr. Powell, I should ask you. I'm sorry. It was advertised incorrectly.
I'll defer to Mr. Hooker on that one.
Yes, Mayor Pro Tem, we discovered that the map, the map that was associated with this was not the correct map. We did re-advertise it again with the correct map, but we, in consultation with the school of government and with Mr. Powell and with Mr. Wolf, the map itself is not part of what's required by the state, only the legal description. We provide the map as a courtesy to the citizens. The presence or absence of the map does not affect the legality of the ad.
Thank you for that. When did we rerun this? Because this was July 27th.
I'm sorry, what was the question?
When did we actually rerun it?
Saturday.
Saturday, this week.
Will it run on Tuesday as well? Because not everybody gets the Saturday paper.
It, it just ran this past Saturday, based on the advice of Mr. Powell, Mr. Wolf, that, that one was more than sufficient. Because the legal, the legal text was still the same.
Perfect. Okay, I just want to make sure we were okay to vote on that. Thank you, Mr. Powell. And I understand there's a problem with the speaker on the side of the courtroom, so that it's hard. Maybe was it hard for you to hear Mayor Pro Tem Fulton's question?
I've noticed that sometimes there's a bit of an echo back here.
Okay. Maybe that's something we can look at for the upcoming meetings.
We also addressed this with the school of government.
Yes.
And made it certain that everything has been done proper and they agreed.
Thank you. I appreciate your research and looking into that for us. All right, are there other questions? All right, this is a public hearing. I'll declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone here who'd like to speak in favor? Ms. Joyce?
Debbie Joyce, and my address is 1110 Dover Road in Greensboro. And I appreciate the opportunity to just speak in favor of this. As always, with Caleb's Creek, we appreciate the staff working with us and the town. And this land would help us incorporate more land into our overall plan and extension of the roundabout and be able to produce what we want to do with the Teague Lane extension. So we appreciate it. Is anyone have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak in favor? Seeing none, is there any one here to speak in opposition? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Do I have a motion or further discussion? Have a motion for approval by Alderman Kenny Cruz. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Joe Pennix. All in favor? It's unanimous. All right, that brings us to the public session. Wait, oh, we, okay. That brings us to public hearing G. One G, Amanda Hoderin, agent for owners, petitioner requesting a general use district rezoning from GI and RS7 to GB for property located at 511 East Bowden Hammer Street, containing .80 plus or minus acres, and being all of the pin numbers listed on. Uses requested, all GB uses apply, so general business, zoning docket K 790.
Thank you, Mayor Morgan. As described, this is a general use rezoning off Bowden Hammer Street at the intersection of Bowden Hammer and Trench Street, as shown in the site plan. The land use plan recommends this area for mixed use. The Kernersville Development Plan and Land Use Plan recommended redevelopment and reuse of these properties in this downtown area. Town staff has been working with the property owner and their agent results from recent zoning violations. It was discovered, basically, the adjacent lot was actually RS7. And so this is basically a cleanup to change the RS7, which used to be a boarding house. And then the auto repair shop was zone GI. And so this was just cleaning it up to GB would help in the future for any redevelopment that may take place also. We had done several general use rezonings on Bowden Hammer Street because there's no planned additional road improvements and all conforms to land use plan, plus the highway corridor covers that area. So staff and the planning board is recommending approval of the following motion, move to amend the zoning ordinance of the town by rezoning the property case K 790 from GI and RS7 to GB, general business. Said rezoning being consistent with the town's comprehensive plan and further being both reasonable in the public interest because Kernersville Development Plan and Land Use Plan recommend redevelopment and reuse of the properties in the downtown area, properties located in the highway corridor overlay. The GB zoning district is conducive to adaptive reuse of existing structures or infill projects. And lastly, the road improvements are already existing for this corridor. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Hatling. Mayor, may I? Mr. Hatling, so rezoning this, because I drive by this a lot right there, will those vehicles go behind the fence? What's the plan?
The, what you'll see if this rezoning goes through, in front is an auto repair shop, there's a driveway located there, there's the additional landscaping for their street yard by the shop space, and then the vacant lot, they'll have a, a street yard planting, additional landscape to buffer from the street side. And we have not yet got any details on if they plan on expanding. They're parking into the vacant lot, they have to comply with the watershed regulations and standards, so we, we don't have any details, but it will, it will, the rezone, if, if rezoned and they come into compliance, it will enhance that little street section.
So they're going to have to comply with like what we had to do further down Bowden Hammer?
Yes.
With all those points?
Yes.
Perfect, thank you.
Even more so than some, some of these, some of the rezonies on Bowden Hammer Street have just caused, we have, we have some modifications that can take place because it's existing development, but that RS7 is all undeveloped, and so they have to have full compliance.
Perfect. Thank you, Mayor. Okay, this is a public hearing. I'll declare the public hearing open. I have Amanda Hoderin signed up to speak in favor.
Good evening, Mayor Morgan, members of the board. My name is Amanda Hoderin. I'm the attorney here for the property owner. My address is at 804 Green Valley Road in Greensboro. Thank you, Mr. Hatling. I think he did a pretty good job summarizing this case. It is a cleanup of a notice of violation that was issued. So the property owner contacted me, said I've got this notice, I need to deal with it. What should we do? I contacted Mr. Hatling and this was one of those ideal scenarios where that phone call ends up with a solution that we both agreed upon and recognized right away. And this rezoning is the first step to that, so that we can, one, get, get this into a cleaned up, unified zoning district for that entire parcel, a district that, that is compatible with the surrounding uses and the surrounding districts in the area, and one that will allow the existing use and business that's operating there. Now, within that, yes, there'll be subsequent steps that has to happen with your zoning permit and your watershed permit that will look at things like the streetscape and the impervious surface, as Mr. Hatling mentioned. So this is the first step in that process. And, you know, making this a piece of property where an existing business can continue to flourish in a compliant and lawful manner. We did look at, you know, whether or not this should be conditional use or general use, but given the highway corridor overlay standards and the uses that were already prohibited within that, that really eliminated anything that we would have been worried about here, and Mr. Hatling agreed with that. So that's why we felt comfortable bringing forward a general use case. So we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any questions at this time? Appreciate your presentation. Is there anyone else here to speak in favor? Seeing none, is there anyone in opposition? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Have a motion for approval by Alderman Kenny Cruz?
Second.
Have a second by Mayor Pro, I'm sorry. By Alderman Joe Pennix. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Okay, we are to the public session. The first item is speakers from the floor. If you'd like to address the board on a non-agenda item, this is an opportunity to do so. We have one person signed up to speak, Claire Vogt.
Hi, my name is Claire Vogt. I live at 51, I guess I'm supposed to give my address. I've never spoken at one of these meetings before. I live in Kernersville at 514 Bent Creek Trail. I'm here today because I'm extremely concerned as a citizen and extremely outraged as an American. I understand that many people are deeply concerned about a variety of issues that are facing our nation, and right now at the moment, I'm concerned about my local community. I know that our town has put up signs that they would like to, in certain buildings, at least at this time, in certain buildings, require people to show proof of vaccination. And that, of course, is not going to be demanded at the door. However, if they do not willingly show proof of vaccination, then they are going to be required to wear a mask. That is going to be given to them free of charge, which is so kind. My concern is this is not a government-community issue. This is a personal choice issue. I personally believe that my rights are granted by God and confirmed in the United States Constitution, that it is my personal responsibility to take accountability for my own health and that of my family. I know that vaccines, I'm not an anti-vaccine person, I'm not an anti-masker by any means, but I'm very much so pro-liberty. Vaccines are readily available to anyone who wants them. If anyone wants to wear masks, they can absolutely certainly do so. If people would like to take their health from a different angle with vitamin supplements and proven therapeutics, that is also a choice. But to begin putting into place a nannied government is no authority. There, there's no rights to do that. And I am deeply concerned and outraged, frankly, that my town of Kernersville, my community, is willing to jump on that bandwagon. Now, it might be a small little step, but I don't think that that's something that we can, can abide. And that's why I'm here.
Thank you. Mr. Swisher, would you like to address the personnel policy that you recently put in place?
Yes, Madam Mayor and the board, Ms. Vogt's correct in what she, what she said tonight. We put a policy in place, much as we did last year in 2020 regarding COVID. That policy was directed by staff because it deals with operational procedures here at town hall. And the employees, we took into consideration the guidelines by the CDC, the state consulted with HR department and our town attorney. And that policy, as it relates to employees, is that employees will be required to wear a mask if they're not vaccinated. If they are vaccinated, they can show proof of vaccination and not be required to wear a mask. What Ms. Vogt, I think, is referring to is a policy that refers to visitors at town hall. We're requiring the same with the visitors at town hall. You come in town hall or Park and Rec, fire station, public services. We require you to be vaccinated if you choose not to wear a mask. If you come in, you're vaccinated, you do not have to wear a mask. If you choose not to show your vaccine card, vaccination card, then you can wear a mask. Or if you're not vaccinated, then you need to wear a mask and we will provide that mask. I understand Ms. Vogt's concern. She can look after herself, so forth. She chooses to do that. That's fine. My concern is, I'm not really worried about Ms. Vogt looking after herself or other visitors. My concern is the 270 employees that work for the town looking after them. So if someone comes in to visit town hall or another town facility, it's my responsibility as the town manager to look after them. And I don't know whether the folks have been vaccinated or not vaccinated, so we are requiring the folks to wear a mask. That being said, it has been proven that you can still transmit COVID even if you've been vaccinated. Obviously, if you haven't been vaccinated, you can transmit it even to someone that has the vaccination. So that was the logic behind that. You know, we, we didn't go as far as what Forsyth County and Winston-Salem has went. Both of those folks have said, we don't care if you've had the vaccine or not. Everybody that comes in to visit governmental facilities needs to wear a mask. I've had multiple conversations today, as you all have, I'm sure. I've had multiple conversations today, as you all have, I'm sure, regarding, you know, asking people to show their vaccine card to not wear a mask. Folks have told me, hey, just make everybody wear a mask, even if they're vaccinated. The logic behind asking them to show their vaccine card was so that folks that are vaccinated, you know, they don't have, they don't have to wear a mask. But I've had folks that are vaccinated tell me, I don't want to have to show my card. I get it. I mean, I, I don't want to wear a mask either. I didn't like wearing the mask when I had to wear it, didn't want to have to get the vaccine. But it's, it's, from my standpoint, it's not that we're infringing on somebody's liberties. We're protecting employees. Furthermore, we're protecting the folks that come into Town Hall to meet with our employees. It's easy that we could have an employee here that has COVID, had the vaccine, they have COVID, and they pass it along to, to a citizen. So then we've just given a citizen COVID. We've had one employee that has died from COVID, one employee nearly died from COVID, and we've had several employees that have been in bad shape from COVID. So we're trying to protect our employees. We're trying to protect the public. Only way to do that, to be fair to everybody, our assumption was, hey, we'll be fair to everybody and say those folks that have been vaccinated, you show us you've been vaccinated, you don't have to wear your mask. If you really don't want to, then, then show us your vaccine card. You shouldn't have a problem doing that. Obviously, that's not turned out to be the case. So, you know, I don't, there's not a, a good solution to it to protect all the employees and to protect the guests. My recommendation would be if, from what I've heard, folks have said, you know, just make all the guests wear masks that come into Town Hall, all visitors at Town Hall wear a mask. That way, you know, everybody's protected. I'm fine with doing that. I don't have a problem changing the policy to say all visitors to Town Hall wear a mask. That's what Winston-Salem's doing. That's what Forsyth County is doing. The state is doing that. The state has taken it one step further with employees. They allow employees that aren't vaccinated to wear a mask, but they require them to get tested every week. We're not requiring that. We're just requiring our employees to wear masks. So I'm good. You know, we saw it when we talked about it as a group here, talked to our legal counsel, talked to HR. We saw it as, as actually, you know, if folks have gotten the vaccine, they don't have to wear the mask when they come in. We thought that would probably be a good thing, but it appears as though folks would rather wear a mask than show proof of vaccination. So honestly, to me, doesn't matter. I'm just trying to find a way to allow folks still to come to Town Hall, other town facilities, conduct their business without closing those facilities down and not put our employees at risk. So that's the policy. I do apologize that, that you didn't hear about it from me before you heard about it on Facebook. But the part with employees, went out to employees yesterday, or early this morning. We were, I was going to discuss the part about visitors tonight, but it got on Facebook before I got to discuss it. But you all, I did not know it had been out until I saw the sign myself. Actually, I saw it on Facebook before I saw it in the lobby of Town Hall. So, you know, goes that way, but that's what it was anyway. It would not change, it would not change the recommendation, except for now. I'm fine with just saying, hey, everybody that comes to the doors of Town Hall, if you're not an employee, you wear a mask. I think all of our employees would be fine with that. We've got some employees that, that are vaccinated that are still wearing the mask. And so, you know, I think they would be fine with that. I'm fine with it. There's not many other options to really protect our employees other than really close town facilities. And right now, I don't think we need to do that. We will revisit this issue, just like we did all of our issues involving COVID, as you all remember. I mean, last year was, was challenging from many aspects. You know, we had employees working from home. We did not have in-person meetings. We did not have folks coming in Town Hall. We revisited that about every month or two to see if there was a change. We will do the same with this. I mean, we hope that it's not an ongoing policy. We, I would like nothing more than to come in here next month in September and tell you, hey, cases went back down, they're seeing more folks vaccinated, or they're seeing the mask work. Other measures that Ms. Vogt spoke, spoke of, and we're recommending that we can go back to, you know, employees not having to wear a mask and visitors not having to wear a mask. Right now, we're not requiring employees to wear a mask whether they are or whether they aren't vaccinated. We're not requiring visitors. We simply recommend and ask that they do, but we don't check. We do have the ability, I will tell you, one of the other reasons behind saying, hey, prove that you've been vaccinated, where the county does not and Winston-Salem does not, we have the ability to do that a little bit easier. We have one entrance to most of all of our buildings, and we have a person at that entrance. So we can check that. But I understand people don't like proving they've been vaccinated. Me, I don't really care. I've got the card, I've got it with me. No big deal, I'll pull it out and show it to you if I don't have to wear a mask. You know, you've got to prove your vaccination now to do a lot of things. But again, I get it. People don't like it. It's fine with me just say everybody wear a mask. That way, nobody is pointed out as saying, oh, you got a mask on, you must not be vaccinated. I get it, I understand that's where a lot of folks were coming from. So if you all are fine with that, I'll change the policy tomorrow that says everybody that comes in Town Hall that's not an employee wears a mask. It's easier for us to monitor, for sure. We're already covered in the courtroom. They require masks in court. And Forsyth County, they require it here, or they will, starting whenever their policy went into effect, August the second, I believe. Our policy will go into effect Friday. The reason behind that was give employees a notice. Some of them go out and get a vaccine, you get the one-day vaccine or whatever. And then it would have given me time to tell you all tonight before it went into effect. But again, that kind of went out the window, so here we are. Be glad to answer any questions. And again, we'll, we'll just reassess it every, every few weeks and see where we are. I mean, this, you know, nobody likes it, but for us, again, it is, it's never been about forcing you to do something or this or that. You know, from that respect, and I, and I've told some folks today, from that regard, we act and operate as a business. And, and one of the, one of the things we have to do as a business, and me and my role as town manager, which would be, you know, equivalent to someone that manages a business, is to protect our employees. Should the government be requiring things of folks, we are a government, people say you're a government, you shouldn't do that. We are operating as a business. We have customers come in this building, all of our buildings, every day. So from that respect, we operate like a business. And one of the key things of any business is to protect your employees and the safety of your employees. That was our reason behind it. It was not to take away anybody's liberty to wear, not wear a mask, to show your vaccine card, not show your card. You know, personally, me, I, the way I look at it, we were on honor system, and I was good with that. I mean, if somebody walked in the building, didn't have a mask on, I assumed they'd been vaccinated. I wasn't going to ask them. You know, early on, I really didn't care whether they had been or not, wear a mask or don't wear a mask. I mean, I get it. But I also get that we've got 270 employees that they expect someone to look after their well-being, and they don't want folks coming in, meeting with them, that may not be vaccinated. They don't want to meet with someone and take a chance on giving them COVID either. So one of those deals, there's never going to be, in my opinion, the answer or resolution that satisfies everyone. It's, um, it's the way it goes. And I'll take the heat for it. Somebody doesn't like the policy we put in place for the operation of town facilities, you know, I'll take the heat because ultimately that, I always wanted to say, hey, here's a policy. But we did consult with folks here at Town Hall, and that's what we decided. So, yeah. Be glad to answer any questions if anybody has any.
Do you have questions?
I have a, yes, I do. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for coming to speak. It's really important for us to hear from citizens. Thank you, Curtis, for that detailed explanation. Again, we didn't get an email like town employees did. So I think I'd like to go on record, say that when a town, when the town sends out an email to all employees, I don't want any more emails than I have to have, but I think it's important to include the board so that we don't get blindsided, kind of. And I know it wasn't intentional. And that's the good thing about social media. You learned what was happening today, right? Before you even saw the sign. So I would say, can we update that sign, right? Because the sign clearly says required verification, right, to show it. So I think that needs to be done. The second thing is, before I got here, because I did have some.
Let me, you want me to update the sign and take off that part?
Yes, absolutely.
Just make sure.
Absolutely. You know, I think it's important that we wear masks indoors, right? Effective driving. And I really think it, you know, because I took a lot of different people's phone calls and text messages and being tagged on social media today. You know, right now, CDC, and I'm reading from the Forsyth County website, CDC advises everyone in areas with substantial or high spread to wear masks indoor public settings, regardless of the vaccination status, to prevent the spread of the Delta variant of COVID-19. So you're saying, if you're a vaccinated employee, our policy is going to say you don't have to wear a mask, but CDC is recommending that we do.
That's correct.
I just want to go, make sure I'm understanding what Kernersville is going to do. But we are not going to ask people to show vaccine cards regardless. They're going to come in here and have to wear a mask if you're a visitor.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I think, you know, this is all new. You know, everybody, we're in this together as a pandemic, and hopefully we will. And I know we're going to get through it together. That's the key. Always have hope. But I just, if you're at the fire station, right, and we've got a group, because I ride by 66, and today, they're sitting in the bay, and there was probably, I don't know, eight of them sitting around in a circle. Do you think it's okay for them not to have a mask? They're in the bay, so they're probably okay. But I'm just thinking, when we have groups of employees together, you know, not in their personal office. I wouldn't want to wear a mask in my office by myself. I get that. But I just, if we're truly, you know, and I know you care all about the 270 employees, but you might want to think about that if you have a special, like your department head meetings, right? That, that's close-knit with everybody. So I, I would just consider that. But I do appreciate you, just, yeah, one for all, all for one, right?
And that will be, that will be something that we will continue to assess, whether or not we need to go back to mandatory masks for all employees if they're inside. Right now, it is, and they have to prove they've been vaccinated. They will have to take their vaccination records to HR. We will have a list of the folks who've been vaccinated. They'll go out to the department heads.
Do we have a plan in place, excuse me? Do we have a plan in place, you know, for those employees that may not be able to be vaccinated or is a religious or whatever? There could be some, you know, some backlash from other employees. I want to make sure that we don't get bullied and that we don't get picked on and shamed being a town employee. So I hope there's a plan, I guess, probably from HR in place. And if there's not, I would hope we get one.
The, the plan is, you know, those folks would be required to wear a mask when they're out of their office in public spaces, down the hall, down the bathroom. We'll reassess that in a week or two and see how it's working. And we may go back to mandatory masks for all employees indoors.
Right, but right now, you know, we don't know who's vaccinated, who's not as an employee. So if there's somebody who, A, might not want to show their card, or B, might not be vaccinated, they've got to have their rights protected a little bit in the fact that if they, if somebody else in the town employee feels very strong about COVID and vaccination, and they start getting lectured, we've got to protect both sides. So I would hope there's a plan in place.
There is. We, we have a plan in place to address that and to make sure that doesn't happen. Still, it's changing all the time. And again, we, we might be next week where everybody has it. So it, you know, as you mentioned, it changes day by day.
Yes. Again, another great reason for cameras in the corner.
Yeah, our plan was not to have to go back to mask at all.
Right, sure.
We thought we'd gotten rid of the mask and, and not going back to the mask, but we are. I can tell you, we, we have employees that are vaccinated, we have employees that are not. We have employees that are vaccinated that are wearing a mask. We have employees that are not vaccinated that are not wearing a mask. So, you know, it.
It's a fine line.
It kind of goes both ways. And we're working with it. We, we assess it every, every day and see where we're at. And, and I would tell you that the plan right now, the policy right now, will probably change.
Okay.
There's just no doubt about that. I don't, and I can't tell you which way it would change.
Right.
It may go back to where we don't have to wear a mask. It may go back to where everybody's wearing a mask. It may go back to where.
We go back home, right?
Town Hall closed down.
Right, sure. I just want to make sure both sides are protected, and we are doing, you know, the best possible thing for our employees. I do think you probably auto-address that if you get a group of employees together, putting a mask on for a short meeting or an hour meeting is probably not a bad idea because we just don't know.
No.
Thank you, Mayor.
And we still encourage.
And thank you, Mr. Swisher.
We still encourage those employees, when they have those meetings, you know, to have them outside. I know Mr. Hatling still has his meetings outside under the farmer's market when he has his staff meetings. Fire department has them in the bays. So we still try to have those outside. We still encourage that. Of course, social distancing, stay six foot apart.
Right. Have they gone back to six versus three?
Uh, we're still at six.
Okay. The other thing is, I guess, since we're going to do this, I think it's real important to maybe put a refresher out there. The proper way to wear a mask.
Yeah.
You know?
Kind of not down here, but.
Exactly. Why don't we get a refresher out there?
Yeah, we'll, we'll put that out. And, and if the board's fine with that, we will, we will change that policy from, you know, showing your vaccine card to just saying, hey, if you're a visitor here, you need to wear a mask. And, and we still, it's probably, you know, just kind of noticing the folks that come in out of Town Hall, it's probably about 60% wear masks, 40% don't. So we still have the majority of the folks coming in, wear a mask. So we'll have masks there for those folks. I mean, if the board's fine with that, that's what we'll change it to, and we'll go with that, starting Friday.
I would feel comfortable with everyone walking in wearing a mask. And I don't want to know about your vaccine situation because it's none of my business. That's my two cents. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I certainly want to support wearing a mask too. I, I think we have 270 employees, we have families that they go home to. I have four grandchildren in the area that are all younger than, than an age that can get vaccinated. So my wife and I, we wear a mask all the time that we're out any place outside of the home to protect transmission of the virus, even though, you know, we had our vaccine back in January and February. But still, we could carry it back to them, and so we have, have been very careful. So I think we should be cognizant of the employees' families as well. So I'm definitely in supportive of wearing masks.
Any other comments or questions? I just want to thank you, Mr. Swisher, for you and our HR director, Ms. Tanner, Ed Powell, and John Wolfe is our legal team for considering and reviewing and coming up with personnel policies throughout this entire pandemic situation. You know, it's funny when, when you think about how few people know about kind of the roles of the town manager and the roles of the board. The candidates who are running for office picked up a packet that talked about council manager form of government, and the local Boy Scouts, when they work on their citizenship in the community, learn about council manager form of government. But that's what Kernersville has. It's our charter that was given to us by the state. We have council manager form of government, which means we have the elected officials, and we have a town manager. And the town manager's responsibilities include looking out for the health and safety of our employees. And so this is a little bit of a complicated issue because there's two elements to it. One, the employee policies for the employees working in Town Hall, but then, which he discussed, which Mr. Swisher discussed with the employees, but then the, the concern about visitors coming in. So I appreciate your research into this, the thoroughness of it, and making recommendations for adjustment of it when we've gotten this important citizen feedback. So it's a, it's, it's important and appreciate all that you've done to help us to keep our town services up and running during these very challenging times. So thank you, Mr. Swisher. All right, is there anyone else who'd like to address the board on a non-agenda item? Okay, we are on to item 2B, consideration of resolution authorizing the exchange of town-owned property on Teak Lane with Boma North Carolina LLC for property. town-owned property on Teague Lane with Boma North Carolina LLC for property on Teague Lane. Mr. Swisher?
Madam Mayor and Board, this goes along with the rezoning case, uh, that was approved a few minutes ago. As Ms. Garner mentioned in her presentation, they need some land, uh, to do a roundabout, some additional lots. The town has a little over five acres, 5.3, 5.5 acres, uh, that adjoins their property, um, there that was rezoned along with ours. And they need that five acres of property. So I've been working with Ms. Joyce, some other representatives of Boma. You know, the town has told them, we have this five acres of property in case we need it for a fire station in the future. Station 44 on Teague Lane, we purchased this property in case we needed to relocate Station 44. As you all know, we're working with Beeson's Crossroads Fire Station on co-locating in that station, which makes this five acres of property potentially available for sale. I told Ms. Joyce and Boma that, hey, until we, until we're in that station, our construction starts and we've got an agreement to go in that station, I don't feel comfortable recommending to the board to sell the property. So the idea of a property exchange came up, and they have some property, they have seven acres of property, that's probably 200 yards down the street from our five acres of property, um, that they're willing to exchange the town for this five acres. Uh, Mr. Hatling has looked at it, uh, it can be used for a fire station in the future if we need to. There are seven acres of property appraised for roughly $455,000. Our five acres appraised for about $255,000, but it's an even exchange. We're not giving them any money, they're certainly not giving us any money, um, especially since they're giving us seven acres of land for five. So with that piece of property, uh, we're recommending the town move forward and approve the land exchange, uh, with Boma LLC for their seven acres for our five acres.
Any questions? Is there a motion? Motion by Alderman Kenny Cruz?
I'd like to second that.
Second by Mayor Pro Tem Fulton. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Keith, are, are you where you can hear everything okay? Okay. All right. The next item is 2C, consideration of an ordinance for budget amendment number one. Mr. Swisher?
Madam Mayor and Board, you have the budget amendment in your packet. I covered most of it, um, all the highlights of it at the briefing. There's approximately $1.5 million preparation from the, the general fund in this budget amendment, with 1.43 million of that being carryover items that were ordered and have a PO in place for those items, but they were not received or paid for in fiscal year 2021. So we are carrying over that money. That money went, rolled back into our general fund at the end of fiscal year 21. So we're carrying it over to fiscal year 2122. So again, 1.43 million of that is carryover. We have four new items, um, in this budget amendment to make up the other roughly $80,000. We have, um, one item in this budget amendment is the Real Time Crime Center, so we have some money in the, in this amendment to do a renovation, uh, to accommodate that crime center. Um, the range building that was approved in the budget for 2122, the price of that building increased, as you all are aware, the cost of construction has went up, that building increased about $79,000. So we have the increase in the payment, not the $79,000, but the payment is right at $11,000 for that building, so we have that $11,000 in the budget. Um, we also have a payment in there for Bobcat, a new Bobcat down in Parkson Rec that the board approved to be purchased after the budget was, uh, adopted. That will be offset, but that'll just show up in the line item later on. So we have the payment for that. And then the last thing that went in here at the very last minute, um, public services, the roof on the garage, I think I spoke to you all, um, at the briefing, that roof has been leaking and we've been patching the roof. The last rain, it leaked to the point that we could not patch it. Um, and it's just not, you know, it wasn't prudent financially to patch it. So we're recommending a new roof. The roof is about $170,000. The payment on that roof, which is reflected in the budget amendment, is $22,500. Everything else with the exception of those four items, um, or carryover items from fiscal year 2021. Be glad to answer any questions, uh, that the board may have specifically about one of the items.
Are there any questions or do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Alderman Boyer, second by Alderman Cruz. All those in favor? It's unanimous. All right, that brings us to item, well, several items about fire and rescue. Curtis, do you want to cover them together? We've got item D, consideration of apparatus loan agreement with Beeson's Crossroads Fire Rescue Department and Colfax Fire Department. And E, consideration of an automatic aid agreement with Beeson Crossroads Fire Rescue Department. Mr. Swisher?
Yes, ma'am. The apparatus loan agreements, we have two reserve pumper trucks that we can loan out, uh, to Colfax Fire Department or Beeson's Crossroads Fire Department if they're in need of one of those. Um, so we have two agreements in there, one for Colfax and one for Beeson approving that loan agreement. Also, that's reverse, they have equipment, we can borrow it as well. And then the automatic aid agreement, um, it has in there that we would loan them that and then also a mutual aid response to cause for Beeson's Crossroads.
Would it help you to have two separate votes on, uh, the Beeson loan agreement and the Colfax agreement, or can we vote on them at the same time?
I think you can vote on the two loan agreements as one.
Okay.
But you would need to vote on the loan agreement and the automatic aid agreement separately.
Okay, are there any questions? Hey, do I have a motion on agenda item 2D, the loan agreements? I have a motion by Alderman Joe Pennix. Do I have a second? Second by Alderman Kenny Cruz. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Item 2E is the automatic aid agreement with Beeson Crossroads Fire Rescue Department. Do I have a motion? Got a motion to approve by Alderman Kenny Cruz. Second by Alderman Bruce Boyer. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Item F is consideration of a request by KBC to hold a food truck and vendor festival on October 17th and to close a portion of Main Street. Mr. Swisher?
Madam Mayor and Board, you have the downtown event application in your packet. It is made by Kernersville Brewing Company. They would like to have a food trap and food truck and vendor festival, uh, with loud music, um, on the portion of North Main Street, uh, between Hughes Street and Armfields. That's basically where, uh, Nationwide Insurance is up to, uh, KBC. They will have the food trucks and the music there. Um, it's from 12 to 6, and I believe that is a Sunday. So we don't anticipate any trouble with traffic. We would detour them down Hughes Street and come up Cherry Street. We would detour them down Railroad Street. All the businesses could still be reached, um, from Railroad Street. You know, there's not very many of them open on Sunday anyway. I think, uh, Geodes is open there at the Hooker Factory, but they could access that from Railroad Street, come in the driveway, one of the two driveways there. Um, pretty sure the rest of the businesses between Hughes and Armfield are closed on Sunday. There may be some on the south end of North Main Street that are open, but that road will still be open at that point. So we don't see any problem with it. Um, we'll, we'll put out the barricades and have the detour for the folks that, that are trying to get up Main Street.
All right, any questions?
Um, I just have one, please. So I have no problem with this at all, and I'll make the motion after. I just make sure that we notify everybody down there because the first time we closed streets before, we didn't notify everybody. So that's the only thing, and I'll, I can mention it to, uh, Rick if you want me to, or you can.
Yeah, we, we usually ask the applicant to do that.
Okay, yeah. I just want people to know communication's key.
We'll let him know as well, and I'll get with, uh, Chris at the chamber. I don't know if she's here tonight.
I'm Chris's watching.
Okay, I'll have Chris at the chamber ask her, she'll send out a notice to all the folks as well.
Yeah, just, you know, let them know versus being blindsided, right? And with that, that's all I have if you're ready for a motion. I'd like to make a motion that we allow, oh, we'll just F. I don't need to read all that.
Okay.
To let them do it. Thank you.
All right, I have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Fulton. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Joe Pennix. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Chris Comer is, um, couldn't attend in person, but she's listening in on the meeting, and can call in if we need her to.
No, that's fine. I'll get with her tomorrow.
Okay. All right. We've got several more agenda items. Do you all want a brief recess or? All right, we'll take a brief recess. Kernersville Board of Aldermen. We are on the public session section of our agenda. We are to agenda item 2G, consideration of a resolution to transfer a portion of Clayton Forest Drive from the state highway maintenance system to the town's street maintenance system. Mr. Swisher?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we have actually been claiming a portion of this anyway, um, for the power vehicles, and we need to transfer that to the town maintenance system. I think we've been maintaining and claiming it, it's just not been officially on our system.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion.
A motion for approval?
Yes, please.
From Mayor Pro Tem Fulton and a second by Alderman Boyer. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Okay, item H, consideration of a resolution approving an equipment lease for a mower for Parkson Rec. Mr. Swisher?
Madam Mayor, this is not just for one mower, um, it is for four pieces of equipment. Um, it's a Toro Real Master, a Toro Sand Pro, Toro's stand-on spreader and sprayer, um, a Toro Workman mower, and then a Toro Pro Core mower, which is all the larger mowers and the equipment that we use on the fields at Ivy. So it's actually one, two, three, four, five pieces of equipment. I think you have that, copy of that lease in your packet as well, so be glad to answer
So if I'm looking at this right, it's about $2,300 every month? And it's a four-year term, right?
That's correct.
And we lease versus buy because it's such a big area that we maintain and it's better.
Yes, ma'am.
Lease, okay.
And that way, in four years, the.
Right.
Mowers and equipment, they're worn out and we just roll it over and get new ones.
Okay. And so we're replacing a lease right now, or?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions? Do I have a motion? I have a motion to approve by Alderman Kenny Cruz.
I'll second, thank you.
Second by Mayor Pro Tem Fulton. All those in favor? It's unanimous. All right, we are to item I, consideration of a resolution to approve the purchase of law enforcement video collaboration platform services under an exception to the bidding laws and awarding a contract to Fusis LLC. Mr. Swisher?
Madam Mayor and Board, you have a memo in your packet, um, regarding the Real Time Intelligence Crime Center. We are recommending that the Board of Aldermen approve their tax resolution that allows us to go through Fusis LLC for this purchase. There's three findings, um, for them to be the sole provider of this without going out to bid. First finding is that Fusis is the only product that does not require replacement of the cameras that are being accessed and integrated. Um, they're the only vendor providing a platform federally CGIS compliant for cloud-based management of integrated video data, and they're also the only vendor whose product is compatible, compatible with both the city of Winston-Salem and Forsyth County. That was a big, uh, point for us, selling point for us, is that the city of Winston and Forsyth County utilizes this same system, which would allow us, we could log into their system as well and see their cameras, um, if there's a crime that has been committed in the county or in Winston-Salem. Um, if they're coming east, uh, toward Kernersville or from one of the directions in the county, we would be able to utilize those cameras to see that. Alternatively, the camera already has, not the camera, but the county, already has, um, several businesses under contract that have cameras that they have a business in Kernersville as well. So therefore, we could utilize that camera, wouldn't necessarily have to go through and get them under contract, they're there with the county. So we're recommending Fusis, um, you have the cost of that, $65,000 annually for three years, and then we would come back and look at renewing that. That's a great platform. Some of you have seen it, some of you have not. Um, we can go over to the county of Winston and see it, and then once we get it up and running, of course, you can see it here live as well. Be glad to answer any questions. It is in the budget. Um, that was the last minute addition to the budget. So it is in the budget, this just allows us to go with Fusis as opposed to some other vendor.
All right, any questions or do I have a motion?
Joe and I went to see this in operation in Winston, we're very impressed with it. We think it's going to be a great, uh, tool for our police department, and so I'm ready to make a motion that we approve the purchase.
I have a motion by Alderman Boyer, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Pennix. All those in favor? It's unanimous.
I would like to go see it, please.
Okay, we'll set up, we'll run through that for you.
Immediately after we adopted the budget with the unanimous approval of including this, Guilford County contacted us and a sheriff, uh, deputy visited with the, our police department and with me to find out more about, um, our, our decision to do that.
Yep, and they are, Guilford County is also considering Fusis as well. So if they get it, then we'll have that connection with them.
We may be one of the largest regions, I'm not sure how much, uh, this is pretty cutting edge, so I'm not sure, um, other places in the state, if it ends up being Forsyth and Guilford and Kernersville and Winston-Salem, if that is a larger area covered by this than other, um, areas nearby.
It will be, and I, I just, I was at a meeting yesterday of Forsyth County Sheriff's Department with, uh, Winston, Forsyth County, obviously, uh, High Point, Greensboro, Guilford County. And, uh, so Guilford County did have their meeting with Fusis, High Point has had their meeting, Greensboro's had their meeting, so it's looking pretty positive that hopefully by January, the whole, all the cities right here will have it, uh, and there should be coverage. And right now, the county has 2,000 cameras that we will, once I flip the switch, have immediate access to. So it's, it's growing by leaps and bounds weekly.
Thank you, we appreciate the work of your department on this.
But thank you all for, for the approval. This is going to be huge for Kernersville.
All right, moving on to J. Discussion regarding reserve fire rescue ladder truck.
Madam Mayor and Board, um, I discussed this at the briefing, uh, Chief Alderman, uh, Chief Bowles was there as well, and the truck. Um, we have an opportunity to purchase the ladder truck from, uh, Colfax Fire Department for $60,000. Um, we'd also have to purchase equipment to go on that truck for about $100,000. As you all know, we've been looking for a reserve ladder truck, um, to have in service when we need it. We've looked at several different trucks across the country. The board at one time approved $250,000 for the purchase of that truck. We did not do that. In fact, we froze that purchase, uh, during COVID, um, last year, did not purchase the truck. Also, we just could not find a truck that we felt was, was worth the $250,000 that we. Also, we just could not find a truck that we felt was, was worth the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that would do what we needed to do. And again, we looked at several trucks from across the country. You know, to get a truck. You know, it was about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We just felt like, you know, at that point, you, you had to weigh, do I buy a used truck or do I just buy a new one? So. Besan, not Besan, but Cofax, they're getting rid of their truck, replacing it with a pumper truck. They contacted us and we contacted them one and asked about the possibility of purchasing their truck. Chief Bowles, Chief Alderman, they've worked that out for us to be able to do that if the board so desires for sixty thousand dollars plus of equipment. So I'll be glad to answer any questions. Chief Alderman, Chief Bowles can answer any questions on the technical end as well, so. That's all I have. Like I said, I can answer any questions the board has regarding the aspects of the truck.
You know, we wanted to purchase this backup, a backup truck before, couldn't find one that was good enough. This one we have experience with because we have used it. In fact, I think we were using it last week. And so, you know, we know the truck well. The, the price I think is good. It will be a backup. It won't be our main truck. And I think it's, I'm thrilled that we get this opportunity.
I think y'all have done a remarkable job and like Chief Alderman said, patience paid off this time. So this is a discussion. Are we going to vote on it or are we going to? What do you need?
Yeah, you can vote on it. If you choose to vote on it tonight, yes, ma'am, you can do that.
Well, thank you all for bringing it to Town Hall last week and letting us look at it. It's in great shape and just, again, really nice job. So I'll be glad to make the motion to purchase the truck and partner with Cofax. I think you've got a hundred thousand dollars worth of equipment that needs to get. On that truck that'll take a little bit of time, correct? So does that need to be included or is that a separate? How do you want me to do it?
You can make the motion to purchase the truck and the necessary equipment to go on it. It's always one motion.
I'd like to make the motion to purchase the truck and the necessary equipment to go on it. Okay.
And I would like to second the motion.
I have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Fulton, second by Alderman Boyer. All those in favor? It's unanimous. All right, item K is the item we added to the agenda, consideration of a resolution opposing legislation to dissolve the North Carolina. High School Athletic Association in its current form. Mr. Swisher?
Madam Mayor and Board, I think I spoke to all of you individually as well as last week at the briefing about this resolution. Some, you know, it's something that will impact the schools in Kernersville. Really, there's four main schools that students in Kernersville attend, that being East, Glenn, Bishop McGinnis. And also the North Carolina Leadership Academy. All four of those schools are currently members of the North Carolina High School Athletic Association, which is the governing body. Over high school athletics in North Carolina. There is currently a bill, it's a, it's a House bill that made it through crossover and it's in the Senate. And the Senate went in and they gutted the entire bill as it was, as it came over. And now the, the new bill is. Is proposed legislation to restructure oversight of public high school interschool athletic. Interscholastic athletics to ensure accountability and fair play. So what it does is it essentially dissolves the High School Athletic Association in its current form. It establishes a new interschool, interscholastic athletic commission to oversee high school athletics in North Carolina. That commission will be basically political appointments, though the folks will be principals, athletic directors, superintendents, maybe. But the governor has nine appointments, the House has four and the Senate has four, so you'll have seventeen people. On that new committee. I've talked to a number of, of athletic directors and coaches in the area, just talked to one as late as Saturday. He said, you know, there's not anybody that hates the High School Athletic Association any worse than I do. But in my opinion, replacing them with this committee is absolutely crazy. Because you have a political committee at this point. That's also housed under, you know, a board of education to some extent that is political makeup. So as you can see, the coaches association for wrestling, soccer, football and basketball all oppose the bill as well. Reason that it's being recommended that the Board of Aldermen. Oppose it is because it does impact the four high schools that student athletes attend in Kernersville. Probably the biggest impact will be to Bishop McGinnis. Bishop McGinnis will be completely eliminated. In the new setup, they will no longer be a member of the interscholastic, interscholastic athletic commission. So they will have to play in another association. I'm not sure that that new association has football in it. I don't know for sure. But the quality and the other associations is, is not the same as it is in NCHSA. The other school that will be impacted, not as much, but will be impacted. Will be the Charter School, North Carolina Leadership Academy. They will have to move up classification from one A to two A. And then East and Glenn will see some impact as well, probably regarding conferencing. Possibly transfers, how transfers are treated. Which can lead to recruiting and some things like that. So it's kind of a toss-up as to how they will be impacted. As well, but they do know that Bishop and NCAA will be impacted, but the feeling across. State, the folks I've talked to is that. You know, if you have a problem with High School Athletic Association, go in and work with them to address those problems. You know, the problems that they mentioned is that they've got so much money. And their fund, they've got like forty million dollars with twenty-five million of that being endowment. They don't have any accountability, so to speak. They don't like the fact that High School Athletic Association will fine a school if it violates a rule. I'm not real sure how you really have any teeth behind your rules if you don't find those folks for violating it. So they've got some issues and I, and I'll be the first to tell you, I've dealt with the High School Athletic Association quite a bit. You know, they've got some things that need to be corrected, but again. Completely dissolving them and then setting up another commission that is somewhat the same. Except for its political appointments and have some different ways of doing things. It's probably not the best way for our schools and our student athletes, so. Be glad to answer any questions you may have. I have the full bill here. If any of you would have any questions about it or would like to read it, I have the full bill as well as it's been presented, so.
One thing that I've noticed in our interactions with that association with the state cross-country meets is. The officials that come that are part of their board. Have extensive experience with high school athletics. They seem to know and understand student athletes and they've made it a career or a passion to be involved with. High school athletes, so there's just a lot of expertise that they bring as to, to understanding. The high school athlete and, and the competition here in Kernersville always seems really well-run. The Parks and Rec Department and Curtis. All, we all work together to do our part for that, but. They bring in some, you know, nice awards and, and the competition runs on time and. The parents and the athletes and the coaches and the friends who come watch, it's just a really well-run, well-organized. Event and, you know, that's Kernersville experience with that sport that we've hosted for what, maybe seven years?
Yeah, probably at this point, probably ten years.
Ten, well, ten years of the state cross-country meet being here. I think I can really understand why. The coaches you've been talking to and the individuals you've been hearing from. Would rather see changes made than a complete reworking of that organization.
Yeah, I mean, nobody's really sure when it change, if it changes. Then nobody's really sure at all about the postseason play being playoffs, championships, how that will be handled. Our experience with them, working with them on the state cross-country championships has always been very positive. I've dealt with them on another level as a coach and sometimes that is, that's difficult in some aspects. But I understand, you know, they're doing it because they're simply looking after all of the kids that play high school sports. And. You know, kind of like what we just discussed with COVID mask. I mean, any decision you make in that is not going to make everybody happy. And. People have two hundred different ideas about how they should be spending their money. You know, from giving it back to schools, to buying uniforms for schools that can't afford uniforms and all of that. When you look at it, it's like, okay, you know, for example, if they buy uniforms for this one school that can't afford uniforms, then they got to buy them for everybody, so. There's just a lot of things there, but our relationship from the standpoint of working with them as a town has always been very positive. And, you know, hosting the championships has been positive and they do, they have a lot of employees that come out to those championships to help put those on and. You know, that respect has been positive. From the other respect, sometimes it's a little bit difficult, but. You know, you're going to run into that with an organization that handles that many different sports, that many athletes, that many schools. They've got four hundred and twenty-six schools. You're just not going to make all of them happy all of the time, so.
Have there been any legislative changes proposed that change what you shared with us on Wednesday to tonight so that we need to revise anything?
Not that I'm aware of.
Ed, are you aware of any changes? Ed, are you aware of any changes to the proposal by the Senate? So that we would need to change anything in our resolution or the letters?
No, I'm not aware of any, Madam Mayor. As I've spoke to you privately about, my advice would be. Like the old country fellow used to say, if it ain't broke, don't fix it.
All right, thank you. All right, any comments, questions, or do we have a?
I'd like to make, do you want to go first?
Yeah, I was just going to ask, Winston-Salem Forsyth County School Board, where are they? Are they doing the same thing?
I don't think the school board has adopted a resolution yet. There have been some school districts. In the state, to my knowledge, I think, that have adopted some, but I don't think Winston-Salem Forsyth County.
Have we talked to them?
Well, I have not, no.
Would you like the resolution sent to them after?
Absolutely. I think, you know, you got to let our school board know we're doing this.
You know, there's a little, some hesitation on some of them's part across Canada or across the state. It's like, you know, we don't. Want to get into an adopt a resolution or this and that, but they have been adopting them, my understanding is, but we will send it on to the, we'll send it on to the school board.
Right, and I guess the participating schools, right? Make sure they know it because the school board may not trickle it down.
Yep.
Yeah, that'd be great.
I've spoken to two of the schools, three of the schools.
But there's four, right?
Yeah, I've not heard back from the fourth, the three that I spoke with. Two of them said they would, you know, they would publicly come out and support. Us adopting a resolution. The other two, I think they would rather their school board do it or whoever, but. I've spoken to three of the four.
Okay, well, and I follow that. I just think we need to communicate, especially, that's a great idea, Mayor. Make sure we send it to the Winston-Salem Forsyth County School Board and those high schools.
We will.
Please, thank you. I'm good.
My experience is about thirty years of officiating high school soccer for the High School Athletic Association and they do a very good job in. Referee training and keeping us up on rule changes nationally that affect. How the game is called in, in North Carolina and I've probably been to every high school in about the eight county area around us. I don't think we need to make this a political thing. I think that it needs to be managed and they need to work out their issues. So I definitely support the resolution.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion that we support the resolution that's been prepared.
Okay, motion by Alderman Boyer, second? Second by Alderman Pennix. All those in favor? It's unanimous. I will sign the resolution tonight and then we'll send it to our representatives in Raleigh. And then also Mr. Hooker to the school board. Think maybe to the chairman and to Dana, since she represents us.
Thank you.
And. Or maybe to everybody on the school board. What do you think? Mr. Hooker, you got it. Can you get all their addresses?
I can. You, you want me to send it to each board member individually? Or just send one to the full board? And then do you want me to also send one to Dana since she's the local board member?
I would definitely send it to Dana Callow Jones, who's representing and lives in Kernersville. I would send it to the chair and ask that it be shared with the board. They'll probably put it in their package. So it won't get lost. Everybody will get the information at one time.
Yes.
And I think you don't have to send it to Dana separately if you do it that way. And then I would definitely send it to each principal. Please.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'd like to send it separately to Dana Callow Jones so she hears it right away.
Oh, that's fine. Okay, perfect.
We'll do that. We'll, we'll do that. Thank you.
All right. Anything further on that? Anything else you would recommend on that, Mr. Powell? Is there anything else you recommend we do on that one?
I'm sorry, I still can't hear you.
It's all right. Is there anything else you'd recommend we do to notify? Others or any other action now that the board has passed that resolution?
I think the urgency would be to concentrate on general assembly because they're the ones that are considering it and. Get the resolution down to them as quickly as possible to show the, what the people out across the state are thinking.
All right, and so Keith can send that out tomorrow morning, first thing. Thank you.
Yes, I can send that by email, but then I'll also send the hard copy in the mail as well. So they'll have it by nine o'clock in the morning or whenever they check their email.
Perfect. All right, anything else on the. Public session? If not, we will move to the consent agenda. The following matters are considered to be routine. And will be enacted by one motion with no separate discussion unless a board member or citizen so requests. In which event the matter would be removed from the consent agenda and considered under the following item. A, approval of minutes for the June twenty-third briefing. B, approval of minutes for the June twenty-nine regular meeting. So anyone who'd like to, on the board, who'd like to consider one of these items separately? So anyone in the audience attending staff or. Citizens attending that would like to see an item removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none, do I have a motion for approval of the consent agenda? Have a motion by Alderman Kenny Cruz to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Boyer. All those in favor? It's unanimous. All right, we have another opportunity for speakers from the floor if you'd like to address the board on a non-agenda item. All right, seeing none, we'll move to the town manager's report.
Madam Mayor and Board, we have two items. I'll cover them both. First one is a resolution setting the dates for the 2021 spring folly. Begins on Friday, September twenty-fourth at six P M. and it terminates at six P M. on. Sunday, September the twenty-sixth. It says Sunday, May the twenty-sixth in the resolution, so we'll need to correct that. But it is Sunday, September the twenty-sixth. Then as in May, it's a long spring folly. And the next one is temporary road closure for the spring folly. I would be closing the roads as have been closed in the past.
All right. Do I have a motion on the resolution setting the dates?
So moved.
Okay, for approval?
Yes.
Motion for approval by Bruce Boyer. Do I have a second? Second by Alderman Pennix. All those in favor? You're not voting on the dates?
No, because I just pulled up the resolution to double check it.
Okay.
And it says date September twenty-fourth and September twenty-fifth. Times five fifteen P M. on May first through eleven thirty P M. on May second. So our resolution is wrong too. So I can't vote on that until we get that right.
We'll correct that.
Okay, so for the record, do you want to go back over it because it's, I saw it on the first one, so I went ahead and went to the resolution. And it's not right. See what I see, Curtis?
Yeah, I see that. The road closure will be five fifteen on September twenty-fourth through eleven thirty P M. on September the twenty-fifth. It'll be, we'll close them at five fifteen on Friday and we'll keep them closed until eleven thirty P M. on Saturday.
Right, so we'll have nothing on Sunday this year.
Sunday is Herman Park, isn't it?
Yeah, it'll, they, they may still have the events or the rides and stuff set up in Herman Park, but the road will be open.
Okay, well, we've had a lot of confusion, so I'm just asking.
Yep.
Right? Okay, I mean, I'm good with it. I just, we got to get it right.
Yeah, we'll, we'll correct those two. I didn't, I didn't see those two when I was reading through them, but. Yep, we'll correct those two. reading through them. But, yep, we'll correct those two.
Sometimes we're just determined to have things in May.
It's supposed to be the first.
It's, it's hard when it's been in May for 50 years.
Sure. All right. So Bruce, would you like to amend the motion?
I'd be glad to amend the motion, yes.
For the changes as just discussed. And, and Alderman Pennix seconds the amended motion. All those in favor? It's unanimous. All right. And then on item 6B, which is the temporary road closure with the changes as discussed, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Okay. Got a motion by Bruce Boyer. Do I have a second? Second by Alderman Pennix. All those in favor? It's unanimous. All right. Matters to be presented by the town attorney.
Madam Mayor, I would recommend that the board consider making a motion to go in closed session to pursuant to provisions of GS 143-318.11.
Can you repeat the statute reference again? 143? Is that for real property?
It includes all the various reasons you can go in closed session.
Okay. All right. We will consider that motion momentarily. All right. Curtis, did you have anything else to present tonight?
I have nothing else to present. Just to let you know, there is a budget to actual report for the general fund that we placed at each of your seats tonight. You can review that. If you have any questions, feel free to email me or contact me about it. That's all I have.
Okay. Any questions at this time? All right. Matters to be presented this evening. Alderman Cruz, have you got anything to present?
Ma'am, I don't have anything. Have a good evening. Beautiful day. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Fulton?
I just would like to say last night, National Night Out was a great event. So thank you all for honoring our employees and y'all did a great job. Each and every one of your departments looking forward to the Honeybee Festival, Bernie. So thank you for all that hard work you're getting ready to do. That's all I have, Mayor. Thanks.
Okay. Alderman Boyer?
Nothing, nothing tonight.
Alderman Pennix?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. All right. So for certain matters allowed under state law, the board can go into closed session. It's generally personnel matters, legal advice, purchase sale of real property, contract matters. So it's very limited reasons, and that's why I asked for a repeat of the general statute number. So we've been asked to go into closed session. We can go back and, we will go back into open session following. We may or may not take up any matters that were presented in closed session in the open session following. During the closed session, the only people involved are the board, our town attorney, our town manager, and any staff that we need to have in the room with us for the discussion. So it is a very limited universe of things that can be discussed in closed session. But at this point in time, I'll ask for a motion to go into closed session.
They always make me read this. We're, we're provided with the motion. It's my understanding, Madam Mayor, that there are certain matters about which our town attorney needs to advise us and which fall within the attorney-client privilege for discussion in closed session. I therefore move, Madam Mayor, that the board go into closed session to confer with our legal counsel under the attorney-client privilege for such matters.
Yeah, I have a motion. Do I have a second? Second by Alderman Cruz. All those in favor? It's unanimous. This board will now go into closed session. All right. Welcome back to the regular meeting of the Kernersville Board of Aldermen. We are finished with our closed session. Is there any further business before the board this evening? If not, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Got a motion from Alderman Boyer. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Mayor Pro Tem Fulton. All those in favor? It's unanimous. This meeting is adjourned.